I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone back from summer vacation. I'd like to also take a moment to thank the administration, the teachers, the support staff, custodians, secretaries, everybody I can, the bus drivers, at all. I've heard lots of very positive comments already around town about the start of the school year and just the vibe and the feeling coming from the building. So I know a lot of work goes into that behind the scenes. A lot of people think teachers have the summers off, and some of us do take the summers off, but a lot of teachers spend a lot of time reflecting upon their practice and putting some time into professional development. And I'd like to thank them all for their efforts. So acknowledging our visitors, we do have Garrett Keegan here tonight to speak on the water treatment plant, but I'm going to hold off on that until John gets here. He'd like to be part of that conversation a little bit more. So let's move on to the approval of minutes from the July 17, 2017 meeting. Since I wasn't here, I will accept the motion and second on either one of you, and I will vote in favor if it, if you both feel that it's an adequate representation of the meeting.
I wasn't here.
You weren't here, right?
I would, I would have a motion for exception.
Okay. Stephanie, would you put a second on that?
I will second those.
Okay. So all those in favor of accepting the minutes from the regular session July 17, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you very much. So we have some executive session minutes to also go through. If anybody wants to hold on to any of these for a particular reason, please just let us know. You don't have to say out loud why. Otherwise, I think this has been through a review process, and we're pretty comfortable at this point letting them through.
It probably was.
So if you'd like to make the motion or just move the motion, you can put them all together. So to release the executive session minutes from our March 27, 2017, our April 24, 2017, and our May 22, 2017, executive session.
I'll make a motion and we'll walk through it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'd like to take things out of order. Are there any objections? Okay. We could move on to our standing committees. Do we have that on the agenda today? Thank you very much. Do we have an admin review meeting?
Yeah.
Do we have one coming up?
Uh, not scheduled yet.
Okay. Do we have any negotiations planned?
No, thank you.
Very good. Union 31, the report of the August 10, 2017 meeting.
We could have our new chair.
Congratulations, Mike.
He didn't move fast enough.
Yeah. I did not. Because we did meet on August 10. We approved the minutes from April 13. We also approved the bids for health clinic supplies and subject and the trash removal. Everything was passed. We reorganized the subcommittee. We also met our new assistant superintendent, Jill Prulix. Is that how you say your last name? If I called it right, I'm not saying it right.
No, it's fine. The last two letters are actually silent. They're just there to add confusion. Prue.
Prue. Alright, that's easy.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing the test for it.
So it was very nice to meet you that night.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, so nice to be with you. Yeah, I don't remember anything else.
That was it.
Sounds pretty good. Thank you very much, Mike. PAC. So we haven't had a meeting yet for PAC, but with Casey Hanson from Halifax stepping away from school committee, hopefully just temporarily, we had a vacancy for the chair of the PAC and now the chair of the PAC. So we'll have our first meeting at the beginning of October. We are moving forward with our strategic plan now that it's completed. I do have to give a lot of credit to the administration over at Pilgrim Area for continuing to reach out to stakeholders even after the strategic plan was over to see what people thought the initiative should be that we first start on. Policy.
The meeting's scheduled, yeah. I'll come to confirm.
Okay. So capital improvement, we'll leave that to later because that really ties into the water treatment and also talking about playground and the implications that the water treatment is currently having on moving forward with the playground. And the legislative agent. God, how do I start this out with getting negative too fast? There is so much going on, both at home, here in Beacon Hill up in Boston, and also on the national stage. Lots of people think this time of year, there's not a lot going on, but this is when bills that were put forth last session get brought back to the table and voted on. I'm going to an MASC legislative committee meeting on Monday to talk about some of the bills that are currently on the House floor up Beacon Hill and whether or not we want to put our support behind any of these bills or if we want to strongly oppose any of these bills. So I'll give you an update at our next meeting. Peter, are you comfortable giving us your beginning of year report?
Absolutely. Great. We're officially five days into the school year, so we don't have a ton to report right now, but I'll do my best. Right now, we are standing at 205 students total, though we've already had many important dates in the short beginning of the year. We have a few moving forward I wanted to make folks aware of. We will be doing day or lessons again this year, starting with grades five and six, and we're starting this Friday, the 8th. September 15 is an early release day, a 12 o'clock noon release. No lunch will be served. I will send a reminder to families about that. It's an early release today for us, and early dates for an early release day. On September 19, the folks from Goulet Music Company will be here to do a music demonstration for grades four, five, and six, show the kids something they interest in so that they might have an opportunity to play. And then September 25, we have picture day, which is always exciting. I did want to share just a little bit of other news with you. I did receive a letter from our school nurse, Mrs. Renee Smith, that she will be resigning effective October 1. She had a wonderful job opportunity that was a little bit too good to pass up for her family, and we certainly wish her all the best. On top of opening the building and having kindergarteners come in, I've been interviewing school nurses for the last three days. So that's, it's been busy. I'm sure we'll find an excellent replacement. I did want to share one other piece of information. I like to share good news whenever we can, and I want to let you know that a local teacher was awarded a prestigious STEM scholarship. Now, let me read you a little bit of this. "A scholarship from Engineering is Elementary will support professional development for Mrs. Carol Rooney at Dena Elementary, helping her to introduce the engineering and technology components of STEM to her students using the award-winning Engineering is Elementary curriculum. Recipients engage in high-quality professional development and leave with a set of classroom materials." So this is through Museum of Science, and Mrs. Rooney did go to some professional development training, and she left there with some wonderful ideas about how to better incorporate engineering into the science curriculum.
Congratulations to Karen.
I'm very excited.
I am too. She's really done a lot of wonderful things in her classroom, down to her chicks last spring.
Absolutely.
And she framed science to life for us. Love it.
I'd like to share good information with you.
Absolutely.
Anytime you have that to share with us, please do.
Absolutely.
It's very exciting to hear about your congratulations.
And again, just to piggyback on what Jason said, to all the teachers, admin, custodians, the building looks great, the school is, it looks brand new right now. So a lot of people put in a lot of time to make that happen, and we're looking forward to a great year.
Do you mind if I introduce our new custodian?
Paul Chagro is our new BMO custodian. Paul came, he had some experience at Woodland Hanson and at Ducksbury.
And Kingsley before that.
And Kingston before that, and he's been a great addition. He's got a lot of new ideas about things, about how to take care of things around here, very helpful, very handy, and I think we're, I think it's going to be a whole month.
Sorry I'm late, everyone. I've been 15 minutes late all day. Get back running, so there we go. So I know we're jumping around a bit. I think perhaps we should just jump right up to Garrett's here and talk through that. Just to sort of bring everyone up to speed, we went out to bid at the beginning of August, the 1st of August, for the water treatment. We did host a meeting here, which Garrett and I would look for as well as Peter. We did have some interest, and we did get two bids in to close the bidding on Wednesday. So that's all good news. The challenging news is that the bids came in higher than what we anticipated, higher than what we planned for in anticipating them coming in, higher than what we even hoped. And so we had two bids, one for just under $210,000 and one just under $240,000. To put that in perspective, we have, I believe you said they...
$173,000.
$173,000 set aside for the project, which puts us at a bit of a deficit, shall we say? And of that, we also have a certain amount of those funds which are earmarked for our consultants. So we don't have $173,000 free to spend on that either, and some problems which we have to overcome. So, all that said, Garrett Keegan's here from Greenstone Environmental. If you could give us your thoughts of where we are beyond the obvious and any thoughts that hope we might be able to work with, and we can then talk about it, maybe, and some other thoughts that we might have to...
The way I see it is there's really two potential ways to improve on the situation that we're in right now. One is to alter the scope, reduce the scope basically, get approval from that, for that from the DEP, because they would have to make a change in the permit as it stands right now to reduce the scope. And thereby be able to issue a, if you go forward with the little bidder, you can issue a change order, agree to beforehand, for a reduction in scope and a reduction in cost. And so there's a number of things that we could look at there. The primary focus of the treatment system is to control and reduce the iron and manganese. And the most important thing is the manganese, because that's toxic and considered a kind of health issue. And so the DEP is most interested in that. Along with that, you'd had a couple of instances in the past few years exceeding the lead and copper standard, which is a kind of indirect result from corrosion here from solder in the piping system, the distribution system. And here, our distribution system, a lot of it's pretty old, it's an original building before the lead was banned and soldered, and also from brass fittings every place where this has been, or whatever. Brass typically has a certain amount of lead, but it also sent into corrosion. Now, here, you haven't had it since several years now, since a few years ago this happened. And the water is only slightly corrosive, pH is just a little bit under 7. So it's already close to the range that we typically would like to see anyhow. And the treatment system I designed is kind of twofold. One was to adjust the pH using soda ash or another basic substance, and the other is to remove the iron and manganese, and I was the manganese green sand filters. So one thing that could be done with little, real impact on the system would be to reorganize the pH adjustment, since you're so close and really it's probably not that big an A few other things that relate to scope reduction would be, right now, I specify all copper piping for the system. This is kind of a bit of an oddity in the state plumbing code that makes an exception for schools. They allow plastic piping, either CPVC or crystalline polyethylene for residential and commercial facilities of any type. But the only mention they make of schools is that they only allow CPVC, CPVC pipe in a direct link from your water source to a dedicated line to the water pumpers. It's just kind of an odd thing. It's right there in black and white. Now, I've talked to a few people about this, and there may be some ambiguity in that the actual water treatment system could be considered not part of the distribution system. It's like in between the well and the distribution system, it's only in that one room basically. And we might be able to get people to look at as just for the treatment system, we could use plastic pipe. And that could save as much as 90% off on the cost of the pipe. The cost of piping, copper piping, has gone up dramatically in the last few days.
Is that a question for the local, is that our local inspector that that would be a question?
Well, it's almost a question of, that particular part is almost a question of jurisdiction. Where does the distribution system start? If we can get DEP to accede to their jurisdiction applying to the treatment and the plumbing code and plumbing inspector applying to everything else, then we're fine. This has to be copper from that building out. But like I say, it's a little ambiguous in the plumbing code. So I'll get some guidance on that. A few other things that maybe could be adjusted in price. We were anticipating going forward to this project very soon, so some of the construction would obviously be during the school year and not vacation times. And because there's outdoor excavation required in order to run the backwash to a dry well out in the paved parking area, that would be considered a more significant hazard with all the children being around. So cost of insurance and security respect to those bids, it might be possible to adjust the timing so that that part happens during school vacation or summer break and reduce the cost as a salary.
And is it only the dry well piece of that that's the particular concern?
Yeah, because everything else is actually taking place just in that room, so it's very contained. There really isn't any potential hazard there.
Okay. So that would be, that would also be something to talk with the P about, just conceptually, because they have...
Would affect the timing.
Right, and they have been wanting this to be done, as we all have, but I mean, if you're talking about a significant, you know, it's all significant money. And to be able to remove that and swap the dry well in from one of the spring break or whatever, because you know, you just swap that piece in, that would be better, as long as they're not going to...
Yeah, and that part of the work could proceed independently of the rest of it.
Yeah, get everything set up, just not turned on, and then get that piece in and then...
That's right. So those are issues that relate to trying to reduce the cost. The other thing that you mentioned when we bid the building was ceding potential other sources of revenue from the outside. There's really two things that come to mind there. Through the DEP, they have a program called State Revolving Climb, and it's dedicated money for water and wastewater projects. It's not a grant, it's a low or practically zero interest loan, and it could be over the course of at least the life of the equipment, so a fairly long period of time for a payback. And there would be, if we were to keep in the part about copper and lead protection, the anti-corrosion part, that would probably be given a preference because they've dedicated a significant amount of their money for that initiative, especially with schools in the The other source would be from the Mass School Building Authority. Normally, they don't do this kind of a project. They have like basically two areas. One is their core system, and the other is called Accelerating Repair. And it looked to me like, well, one, this project is much smaller than what they normally can.
Number ten.
Normally, their project is at least a million. I saw the lowest amount was a project of about $300,000 on the list for the last couple of years. If you look at how they describe the accelerating repair, they, this could be smaller projects and sort of it does meet the definition of what would be included in that group, but they also seem to focus on three main things, roofs, doors and windows, and boilers. I didn't see anything else that had actually been given a grant.
You've had some experience with this for a reason.
Unfortunately. I actually got $7 million for Halifax. Well, they got $3 million.
You know a lot more about that program than I do, and what's your sense of...
I don't think this would qualify, but we may need a roof in here, so it's another day. Yeah, it's another day.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can't imagine that this would qualify.
Yeah, and I think that's the only source of state money, because the state education department doesn't have...
Right.
So for, for the pH adjustment, eliminating that, for plastic versus copper and change in terms of construction, the next steps are getting DEP's opinion on this, and then also trying to get a figure to what that might be.
That's right. So I talked to Ted Stroud from Atlas Construction, the owner of Atlas Construction, and he would be interested in pursuing this.
Okay.
He's actually an excavation contractor, and he's on his project, he is partnering with a subcontractor, a plumber named Mark Swenner, that's from Middle Barren, Laker.
Correct.
And so we could look at what we could save by chopping out a few of these things. The other part is a fairly recent addition to the state requirements is the chlorine control system. They put in a coordinate to have an automatic full-time chlorine monitor and control system. This only goes back a year or two now, and it is because they had one case of a system that overshot the dosage of chlorine. So this safeguard prevents that from happening, which just shuts the system down. There's a lot of systems out there that don't have it right now that exist. In fact, this is a very similar one that I had done a few years ago, about six, seven years ago, a free time Laker region that doesn't. Although they are actually looking to put one in. So it is definitely something that is a good idea, but it is a significant cost because it's kind of a high tech instrument.
So that was more good news.
That's right. I wouldn't hold out much hope that DEP would back up on that, but they really see the need for a kind of resolution.
Garrett, is the process to ask DEP to review the suggestions, is it a formal request from you, from us?
I talked to, I talked to the senior engineer, Julian Tardough, who reviewed and approved the project last year. And what she would like is a letter, probably both for me and the school committee, bringing her up to speed with where you're at, what transpired with the bids and so forth, and what we suggest for possibly changing the scope to reduce the cost. She wasn't willing to commit to anything at all on the phone. She just needs to have it in front of her, she needs to discuss it with the people at the Southeast Regional Office.
And then based on what we have put out to bid, I mean, I don't know how we, I don't know how this timing all works, so we have to sort of figure that piece out too. And we can certainly put a letter together, but until we understand what the cost savings would be, you know, this is put out just as a first, I mean, if we were going to save $2,000 not to level the, you know, pH, then we might say, well, that's not really worth it. If it's $15,000, then that might certainly be worth it not to do that, and then ask DEP if that's okay. You know, so certain of these things, we need, I think we kind of need the number piece of it in order to be able to say, DEP, this is what we would like to do.
Hold on. To get a breakdown on costs and negotiate with Atlas Construction, because we need to find out what are the longing for, and see whether it's going to make a difference.
And have there also been some, we need to talk with the facilities manager a little bit about...
Yeah, the other thing Kara Medieglo, she had mentioned, she was with us when we opened the bids, was to pre-purchase the equipment, that that can save 10 to 20% as, you know, as to...
That's true. In talking with the manufacturers represented from, in this case, both bidders use the same source of equipment basically, Brad Edge Technologies out of Georgia, and they have a local representative from Inova and Ora, who is actually at the bid open. He said that their cost was about $77,000, that was their portion of it. And so that's, I'm not sure if that was factored into a markup, that's probably before the markup from the contractor. Typically, that might be 10 to 15%.
Right. Some other pieces I might think about, but I think we need, so we need to get...
Oh, and I also forgot to mention something when I talked to him, and actually I talked with him again today. He said that if you were looking at a relatively long timeframe, not needing to deliver it soon, but contracting for it and then delivering it in like four or five months or whenever, they probably could, they're discount because they consider it a bit of a schedule and fills that on, you know, during the...
So I think we should, we should explore that too. I mean, I think we have to explore all of these options to then be able to go back to DEP with sort of their checklist and to tell them, I mean, by allowing us to do this, this saves, you know, this much, or this hacker saves this much off of it, which makes it something that we can, we can afford, or find a way to afford, that's why we're not going to do it. So if we get that information, then we can put that letter together to DEP. Would it be, would we do it just a joint letter, or would we do separate letters? I mean, it seems like...
Probably separate letters.
Pretty much with the same information.
Yeah.
Right, so we can agree on sort of what it is and what we're going to put together.
So I can grab something up, you know, in the current... So I can grab something up, you know, in the current week and as a project.
Okay. And now as far as, as far as timing, I think, you know, when we went out to bid, I think we said we would be back. What's our timeframe, and what our timeframe is that we're supposed to...
Jeez, I don't have that with me. If you did, I'd remember stipulating.
We have the bids here.
It's more in contracts than I have.
That's in contract language, good.
Why don't we do this, by the way? I mean, it is likely we're going to have to get together again just to talk about this because we'll need to make, I don't think we have enough information to make decisions that we can go on tonight about what we're interested to take, not to take, what we want to go to DEP for and all of that. I think, I think we're just, we're just about at the end anyway, by another convenient time. It doesn't need to be, everyone just needs to, it's the school committee, just to try and, you know, to get that through down, and we can look through the, I guess we'll look back through the documents to figure out what our timing is and where we can get that done. So if we are able to get some of these answers next week, it might be going the following week, maybe we try to get together for a short meeting to be able to nail down what we're comfortable with going to DEP with, at which point we can draft a letter and we can send those over to them and get that ball rolling. The question is, and will end up being how quickly they're willing to get back to us and what our timeframe is, but we should be able to explain that in the letter too.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'll have to just figure out what our options are as far as timing to get this sorted.
Yeah, it's going to require some kind of negotiation with a little bidder anyway in order to issue a change order.
Right.
And the timing can be part of that.
Okay. Do you guys have questions?
So I just have a question on the bidding process. With the two companies that gave us the bid, are they only Massachusetts companies?
Yes.
And are Massachusetts companies the only ones that see the bids?
Well, they're advertised Massachusetts.
Do we go outside Mass on the bids, or just Mass?
Typically, people that are in the business are looking at multiple states. So like there's a couple of electronic databases that is listed on Massachusetts. I think whether...
And these are two companies that have done these kind of projects before?
Yes, both of them are experienced, have had experience with both of them on other projects.
And did they come in over on other projects?
I can't say. I don't really have their history.
But are, but the way that, the way that the contract is written is for them to put it in for the price that's agreed upon, absent any significant contingencies that are unforeseen. You know, that, not that it took them long to do it, but that some other major issue that was not foreseen or anybody would have to be done with a change order. So it's a fixed price contract, which is why they're bidding, which is probably also why it's higher. And we were asking for a short timeframe, and we were, I mean, a lot of things we were asking for, so hopefully we can work that down. I think one thing we probably should, you know, we have that limited amount of money, but we may need to look to other sources to, but I, maybe we'll be lucky and we can take it down $50,000, but it seems unlikely to me. And so, you know, just so the committee starts to think about it, we may have to look to whether it's some of the school choice funds or other, we're likely going to have to find some money for it, and we're not likely going to be in a position to, from a timing perspective, or is, do we, is it probably a good idea to go back to town meeting and ask for more money yet again? I mean, this is well out of our control. I mean, you bid out, and I spoke to another company that does project management work, because he wasn't too surprised, but he did think it was unfortunate. But he's just, this is what's going on a lot in the industry. There's a lot of bids are coming in a lot higher than where people are expecting it. So we'll have to, when we can get to a number, we'll have to figure that out, but I don't think we're there today. We'll be shortly.
I think this is one of the reasons why we've been so cautious moving forward with the playground. You know, we do realize that that's something that we'd like to approach in the future, but we knew contingencies always mean contingencies. And the fact that Brian Wick, your predecessor as the chair, was, you know, pretty well spoken when he said that the money from school choice should not be something that we rely upon for operational budget, it should be used for one-time events, things we can do to improve the school. And this seems, it's not as much fun as a playground. This seems to fit the spirit and the scope of what Brian intended and what you and I and Stephanie were here to vote for when we made that decision. So as much as it pains me to say we'd use that school choice money potentially, I do agree with you. I appreciate you finding the DEP revolving fund, basically a low interest and no interest loan, but I wouldn't want to go down that, obviously, that route if we had available funds that we could lend to this project if needed.
I would agree with that. So, you know, as much as I had hoped to go a bit earlier tonight and kick this all off, it was not quite what we intended, and we all got to miss all the excitement of no bids as of 10 o'clock in the morning, and then two bids, and yay, we have two bids, and then oh, they're a lot.
We opened them at 3 o'clock, it was 2:20 and 2:40 when we came in, I was getting very nervous.
So apparently, this is very common too, but, but here we are, we have something to work with, we have a bidder who is willing to work with us, so I think, Garrett, let's move ahead on that, and we will, committee will make itself available to make the decisions we need to make so we can keep the process moving.
All right, so we'll have something for you by the next one.
Excellent. Anything else for Garrett?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I think you're appreciated. Appreciate you too.
Good day.
Thanks.
So we didn't do committee correspondence, we just go right back up and go back down. I didn't have anything in the box, but I did get an email from Karen yesterday regarding the playground.
Yesterday.
So what I relayed to the parent response is essentially that it's something that is on our agenda. We have put it into the capital plan. It's certainly something that we know is needed, just to bring the school to where it should be as far as a playground. But then right now, we're dealing with what we just spent the last 25, 30 minutes talking about, which is the water project, we need to get that sorted and moving. But that, this certainly is something that is sort of, well, not beyond our radar screen, it's something we're working on. And we've already done, what Peter has both done, a decent amount of work, and it's already... And once we can get the, I think the water project moving, I would think that from the committee's perspective, it's something we should take whatever next steps we need to do to get a plan together. Part of the thing that gets into this, as it does with everything, is timing. I think we have, we have talked here about wanting to bring this before the preservation committee because it should qualify under their recreation, part of their mandate, and there's a decent amount of funds there. Certainly want to be able to bring any other funds that we can to it, that'd be some school choice money. But to do that, that's an October timeframe, you have to have something ready to go for that. And then you have town meeting in May that appropriates based on that October timeframe. So it is one of those things that we get the water piece sort of moving that we need to pay attention to because if nothing else, we can't get to this point next year or the year after and say, oh yeah, let's put something together because we're already too late. I need something together before we make the summer really to be able to have a good project plan, understanding not just of the equipment, but probably even more so of the site work that we need to be done. Equipment is only a piece of that, and depending on the amount of site work that could be done, it could only be a small piece of that. So, and you add to it as well, what we've been dealing with here with, we're just talking about digging a hole, putting a dry well in.
Right.
20 feet, you know, a 20-foot run in five feet from the building. Not quite, but, you know, it's a short bid, and all of the issues with that, if you're doing work out here, you know, you're going to have to do that when schools close, which means something. You know, it's not something you can fit into a week. So you've got to get all the timing set up correctly to be able to know that, one, we're going to go in with good numbers, and you got to bid it. So if you think of that too, you sort of, you could probably want to wait until town meeting, or you go out ahead of it contingent upon a positive vote at town meeting to get some bidding downs that people are slating it for that. But you could do that whole process for, and go to the town meeting in May 2019 and not be able to do the project till May of 2020. Because we ran into that with the gazebo.
Yep.
That we got it all approved, and then you have no time to get the bids out to people in for them to slot their work because it's, you know, the end of May, June, and they're done and things get cold. So, so that's sort of what I relayed. I certainly encourage them to come and join us at a meeting if they would like to provide us input. I encourage other parents out there, if you would like to provide input. You know, we have a regular scheduled meeting, this is a standing item on the agenda because we do talk about it pretty much every meeting, and it's something that is a focus. Do you want to add anything on that?
No, again, it's obviously a project that the committee feels pretty passionate about, but it's a distraction at this point with our needed attention on the water treatment plan. So I also relayed that to the parent who contacted me in regards to the playground and said that we would be more than willing to entertain any ideas and feedback and any assistance in the future.
I had nothing else in correspondence?
I have nothing.
Do we have any new business? And then jumping back to unfinished business, I don't have any update on the driveway side. Again, that was, cost, I'm just going to move ahead of that. So as soon as the year starts moving, that will instantly steam again. Community Garden, that is, I met up here with them to sort of try and site where that would work, and we can pretty clearly see where, I actually pulled up the plans from this, so we can see where the water line is, so now to put them on top of that, I think they're likely going to go either probably to one side because it's, one part is sort of sloped and one part is flatter there. But we sort of came to realize as we were, we're sort of conceptually talking about it, it's probably going to be easier for them just to build the boxes and come drop them down before they decide, yes, this is where it's going to go, because it kind of loses perspective when you get out there, it's kind of big. But the, I think the desire is to be able to put in a few things ahead of the harvest fair and start to get people's interest going, and then really it would be the spring, it would be the big kickoff, and be able to have the classrooms do some engagement and all of that. So some other good ideas there too, so we'll keep, as things progress, we'll look for the backup dates for... Water treatment, we have already talked about, and the playground, we've already gone too. So that brings us up around. I don't think we have any updates from House side, I see they're back enacted again, seen a couple of emails, but we can get more from that next time. And that brings us to Christine.
I'm ready. That's a tough act to follow. I want to do my best.
Sure you will do amiable.
Well, this is your first financial for the year. There are a couple of things that are developed on page one of the detail. You'll see that we have a deficit in our tuition reimbursement account. We have had some activity this summer. What's happened is teachers are submitting for reimbursements that fall under two different contract years, but it's all in one financial year. So we just had a couple of teachers and had some significant reimbursements that all have to do with the summertime. The other one I want to mention is at the very end, on page three of the detail, at the end of the district book, under special education tuition, we're not predicting a deficit, I think, at this point. It's just that when I budget it, I budget it under one line of tuition services, and then as we're categorizing the expenditures, we're separating them by their type of placement. That helps us later on as we're doing state reporting that we need to do at the end of the year. So as of right now, we still have a surplus in the year, but I just did want to mention it to you. And then on the very last page, our outer district vocational, it appears that nothing has happened yet. We have students going to three different schools, and then we have transportation costs associated with that. I was waiting until every school had opened because we did have students that were enrolling, but I wanted to make sure they actually decided to attend before we started encumbering money. So before we have our next meeting, you'll start to see those others put in here, accounting for all the tuition and the transportation costs. And as of right now, not all the students that we had budgeted for are attending, so we will be having a surplus in that account. Just wanted to mention that as we start off the year, and that's it for right now. Unless there are any questions, yes?
I was wondering if we were able to continue some of the partnerships we've established with neighboring towns to send kids to vocationals?
We have, we like to do that because it works. It works with transportation costs, it keeps our transportation costs down. And this year, we partner with Middleborough, that's what we do, our bus goes to Middleborough, and between us, we have one bus that goes to Norfolk and one bus that goes to Bristol County. We actually have other towns that are getting on our bus early, we have two students from Duxbury, we have a Pembroke student, so we're trying to make it work, and it helps all of us.
Appreciate the work it takes to establish those relationships and to save us the money.
We all play nice. There is one other thing I wanted to mention, at the very back of your package, at our last meeting as we were closing out, John had requested some information on what we've returned to the town the past five years. So I've spelled this out from 2013 through 2017, and I've broken it down between operating budget, special education, and outer district, the way the town budgets. So that's a summary of each year what we have returned to the town. Any questions on that?
I think I lost one more number. I would love to, I would love to see on here what we, what our projected increase was and what it actually was. So you know, which we had, we had a, like we have a 1.8%, like our budget says, 1.8% increase over a year prior. But if we, if in that year we return, let's just say $134,000, then clearly we did not have a 1.8% increase in the budget. Again, this is nothing that needs a priority, I just, I think it would be an interesting number to have here in the snapshot and say that, you know, we actually ended up with the actual increased budget of 1.4% for that year because, you know, we've been, I mean, and we've been going in with really mean budgets, and, you know, it was, it was no different at all this year, in fact, it was even a little leaner, and yet the school looks fantastic, you know, it just, it's great. I just want to make sure that at some point, this isn't going to be every year. So it's, you know, we have this and we kind of track it, it's just so easy to be able to pull out, or even just when we have discussions with the faculty, just to, I mean, I would, next time we go to chat with them, even about that revolving fund for SPED, this is something I want to share with them, because this is, this is one that I thought.
And you can see that just under the operating day, over five years, we're returning $22,500. That's relatively small amount per year.
That's the actual budget.
But it's so, other categories where there's more volatility that we see those swings.
Right. Yep, well, I mean, and yeah, we can't control that, but we have to budget it properly.
Right, correct.
And that's the whole, that's the whole point of this, is that if we don't budget it properly, and all of a sudden two extra kids go and do vote, then we're... budget it properly and all, all of a sudden two extra kids go and do vote, then we're...
That's significant.
Then we're, then we're out, you know? And, and specialized, you know, we don't have, we don't have full control over that. Although, you know, what you're, what you're seeing here is you're seeing why we have Maria.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's, it's starting to show some of that, that we're controlling a little more of our costs.
Yeah.
Which means we can be a little better on our budgeting, which means that you might not see as much money show up here, but it's showing up in the basic budget itself. So this is great. It's nice to have that control. Thank you.
Hi.
Where's Shawn now?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment and introduce our newest superintendent, Dr. Jill Crowe. I can't begin to tell you how happy I am that she's here. Many people have commented, I seem much calmer, which is true. Pete actually talks to them on the phone with me, he's like, I gotta go.
I do.
So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about how we hired Jill. We had 73 people apply for the position and of the 73, they were reviewed by our principals, assistant principals, special ed director, myself, and we narrowed it down to a pool of 17 people that we brought forward to a subcommittee, which was our interview subcommittee. And there were 13 people that were able to attend the summer meetings. We had principals, we had school committee members, we had teachers, we had SPED director, myself, and we reviewed the 17 applicants that were brought forward and we narrowed it down to seven that we invited in for interviews. And we had them come in for an initial interview. And after we interviewed the seven, we decided to invite three people back. And of the three people that came back, it was unanimous that Jill was our best choice and it was absolutely correct. I'm, I'm just absolutely thrilled to have her. In terms of her background, she was in a regional school system. She was at King Philip for 16 years. She started out as a teacher and then was a curriculum leader and then a assistant principal and then a principal. And then she moved over to Free Town, Lakeville, again, another region, as a high school principal. And then she has been assistant superintendent in Situate for five years. So it makes a huge difference, somebody coming in with central office experience for me. She already knows how to do the grants, she understands the importance of multitasking numerous responsibilities and she's got some experience with regions. So Jill's main learning curve is just trying to figure out all the players and how we really fit together as a puzzle. And it's a wonderful puzzle indeed. And she's, she's been absolutely great. So she's hit the ground running and the thing I think that isn't as obvious is her passion for children, which is really what appeals to me most. You know, truly passionately believes in the abilities of all kids and giving kids all the options. And that's something that I've really tried to focus on and I think we're gonna be quite a dynamic duo. I'm thrilled to have her and I have already made it very clear, she's never allowed to leave. Way too much work.
Do you let her go home at night?
No. All right, once in a while. So anyway, I'm thrilled to have her join us. And she actually, just to give you an idea, she put together, she's been here, this is day seven. This is day seven. And she put together, but she's going to really make...
Yeah.
They gave them, okay. She's gonna force me to clean up my act. This is her August progress report for the seven days that she's been here, you all have one, of the things that she's done so far. So I'm really going to work harder. But no, she's very organized and, and again, is really state focused and is working hard and really being a wonderful new addition to our office. In terms of opening day, we had a great opening. I received more comments than I think I ever have from teachers that said it was the best opening ever. I have somebody whose wife works in the district, I'm hoping she would agree.
She did this.
Okay. I was kind of like looking for smile, Michael. I was like, I was like, okay, Michael, we all here. I don't have any teachers, I can say.
No, she said it was great.
Okay.
Just like last year.
Yeah.
So keep it up.
Thank you. So what I focused on this year was sort of teachers as everyday heroes and everybody in school districts as heroes. And I actually started by telling, I usually tell some sort of story, I'll just do a very quick version of it. But I actually told a true story and it was my son, who doesn't know I told this story, who is 27 now and is, just got back from India and living in Australia, but that's all good. But I told a story when he was five years old and started kindergarten. And he was very shy, real little guy, very petite, had been pretty sickly as a toddler and very quiet. He was like one of those kids you want to bubble wrap going into school, you know, the kind, like you're just like, the world's a big bad world. And so he went in and he was at school at a time when we did letter people, which was, you know, you had the letter A and you had to color in the letter A and then, you know, you would put the letter on the board and it was very lockstep and there wasn't differentiation 22 years ago. And the problem was my son started school reading chapter books. So he was also a lefty who hated to color and, you know, really didn't enjoy any of the activities that were what you had to do. And so this one particular day, the teacher had put the letter Q up on the chart paper and everybody was supposed to list every, all the words that kids knew with the letter Q. And of course, kids are saying Q-tip and queen and those kinds of things. And my son was very shy, but this time he raised his hand and he said, "Quetzal." And the teacher said, "No honey, that's pretzel, begins with a P." And Adam, who is very quiet and normally wouldn't do this, said, "No, not pretzel, quetzal with a Q." And so the teacher said, you know, "No honey, that's, that's not a word." And sort of, you know, went, you know, sort of tried to quiet everything down. Of course, all the kids are laughing hysterically and my son puts his head down and is trying not to cry. And this is when the whole audience of the teachers all go, "Aww." You know, because everybody had that five-year-old that, you know, everybody could see it. And so the paraprofessional went over to him and took his hand because she had seen him reading books and knew that it could be a word because he was kind of like one of those kids. And so she went and took his hand and she took him over to a dictionary, Adam spelled the word out for her and she looked it up and sure enough, the word quetzal was in the dictionary and it's a bird, I like birds, many of you know that, I have a problem with birds. And I, it's a bird in the tropical rainforest and it's a very exotic bird and it's supposedly one of the most beautiful birds in the world because it's got these very long, beautiful tail feathers. And so anyway, the story's short, and pretty shortened a little bit here. The reason why I was thinking of and how important it was, was why would something so simple make such a difference in a child's life? He actually wrote about that on his college essay 13 years later. And it was about, you know, acts of kindness. And so I was, wanted to point out, no matter how small you think your, you know, kindness is to a child, it makes all the difference in the world and that everybody can be a hero to a child and it can really make a difference forever. So anyway, that was my story and the librarians were kind enough to put together a video for me. And in the spring, I usually try to come up with some concept of what I want to do for opening. And the librarians were kind enough to put together a video of all our students about teachers as heroes. So they interviewed a bunch of our students and we showed that. I also did a TED Talk, which had mostly the audience, I think, in shock and was very moving. People were very approved, very impressed with. And then on Tuesday, we brought in Dr. Stephen Lane, who does a great job and he does a speech about balcony people. And we all have the people that are our cheerleaders that we think about in life, often it's your mom, your dad, your big brother, whatever it may be. But often in our balcony are teachers. And so the idea that teachers should be in the balcony of our students. So sort of really focusing on the difference we can make. Again, you may remember in June, we talked about that inclusive practices and our, our plan, Planning for Success model. You know, again, we're continuing that, continuing to work with social, emotional and sort of building upon that. So it was a great opening, received a lot of positive comments about it. I think it, it struck a chord with people. I think they really felt ready to sort of take on the challenges of teaching. So, and hopefully we'll be lucky. Excellent, thank you for work. So you may recognize some people in there.
You have the capacity to change the world.
My teacher is a hero because when I was sad and I had anxiety, she would always help me through it.
My teacher is a hero because my grandpa had a height. I was still feeling a little sad and I wasn't really listening. So my teacher helped me by getting over it while still remembering the things he did for me. Thank you.
Teachers are heroes because they make my life easier and so I don't struggle.
Teachers are heroes because they're fun.
You stand up when heroes need it.
My teacher was my hero because she helped me to go with my love of reading.
My teacher is a hero because I couldn't see the numbers on the board, even though I had class. She moved all the desks and put me in the front. And if I still couldn't see, I can move up. Thank you.
Dear teachers, thank you for everything you do for us, such as teaching us, making us feel special and helping us through our bad times. This is why you are our heroes.
You show you care.
My teacher is a hero because she made a subject fun like science because we did terrariums.
My teacher is a hero because when I was in fourth grade, she told us we could sign up for drama. She thought I would like it, so I signed up. She made me realize I love theater. Thank you.
Teachers are heroes because they help you do math, they help you do reading, they help you get through problems, and they, they have fun activities at that.
I think she's the best teacher ever. First, she taught me all these great things in math and all, but she also showed me I am good and that's all that matters. And that everybody makes mistakes, no matter if it's in school or that.
She is also very sweet in math. She's the best. She's my favorite in everything. She is truly awesome and I love her so much.
Teachers are heroes because they teach you how to read and be smart and learn how, and learn how to be good listeners.
I think teachers are heroes because they help us learn, they help, help out of a plane, help me and they, they keep us safe.
You make a difference.
My teacher was a hero because when I was having trouble with math, she helped me figure it out.
Teachers are heroes because they teach you how to behave and teach you how to do math.
I think teachers are heroes because they help each other to learn and get, be stronger at other things.
Teachers are heroes because they, they help you learn and help you read.
You can't hurt normal life.
Um, so teachers inspire me to do better in life.
Teachers are everyday heroes because through their passion and what they do, they inspire us to be passionate in what we do.
The teachers in the English department are always there for you and they're everyday superheroes. So thanks to the English department.
I feel prepared to go and fill the technology thanks to all the teachers that are here.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Silver Lake teachers for everything you've done for me over the last 15 years. You guys have been great. Everyone has been great. Teachers inspire me and then I sort of take that inspiration and use that to try to inspire other people and pass on the passion that they instilled in me. So, you know, a teacher does a lot for not only the student, but, but everybody in the community and everybody that the student touches as well.
Teachers do so much work behind the scenes that none of the students actually see, whether it's going home and working or coming in early. We really appreciate all the work they do.
So thank you to the librarians, I think they did a great job, you know, gathering some of the kids in the spring to help us get ready for opening. The other thing that we did this year, which was wonderful, was we actually had the band playing as the teachers were all walking in, which was great fun. And then they performed a song in the auditorium and we also had the middle school teachers do this absolutely adorable song called Family Tree that they did. I usually bought it in the high school, but we moved down to the elementaries, I mean, the middle school. So I've given the elementary music teachers heads up, I'm looking next year, see if they can pull it off. The key is to get some, the parents willing to bring the kids in in the summer to do it. But anyway, so it was, I think, a great opening and I think we're gonna have an excellent school year. And just to reiterate, thank you to everyone, to the custodians particularly. This school year, we had an inordinate amount of projects in the different buildings. So the custodians and the teachers and everyone really had this little pool together and to work to get a lot of things done. You know, in Silver Lake, we, we did some massive sewer projects, breaking up floors. We're just starting to get the buses on time now because we actually had to close some roads. And in Halifax, you know, we've been working on the roof all summer, almost done, a few more weeks getting there. And Kingston Elementary, we had to do a sewer project there. And so it's been very exciting, all the things that are not in your job description that I've learned. We have this little water treatment we're going to get through here.
Little thing.
Yeah. So, thank you to everyone.
Right, yeah, no, it was almost great here.
Yes.
I mean, although now you've set the bar because you've been doing this for a few years. Back at the school, it's like it's all new.
I know, it does.
It's really, it's impressive though because it's, I mean, it's a, you're protecting the investment, you know, the big investment that was made to build this building. And by keeping it that way, it's gonna add many, many years to the life of the building.
Absolutely.
And I think that I'm sure the townspeople really appreciate it and all the parents and the kids do. So, thank you. Anything else from folks? So I'm guessing if we're gonna, just to talk about potential times and we'll validate this later once we are sure of it, but I was just looking at the calendar and again, this could be a meeting that we can do, we can do it at six if that's easier. It just, it really just needs to be the committee to be able to make these decisions and take the vote. But, so next week, we'll probably be making, getting everything together. So it could be as soon as the, it's like the 18th. I don't know what days are better for folks. And again, I wouldn't anticipate it being a long meeting, but kind of just to reset them a quarter to be able to make our, make the decisions, get thoughts on that and move things along. And I, and we will look into the, and we'll look back at the contract as well. We had some contingencies in there about timing and all that and we want to make sure we stay on the right of that. So, but we'll also, you know, go back to, even if we're able to meet them. And that's why I think the sooner we can do it, the better because we only go to DEP and they will need to do some of their pieces of that too. Which, yeah, make them go any faster than they will go. But, so would something like the 18th be reasonable for folks? Would we even do it? We do it at the townhouse too, you know? As long as, as long as you, you want to do it at six, that's fine. The only idea I can't do is Fridays because I got hockey on Fridays.
I have hockey on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Okay, well, we'll send, what we'll do is I'll, when we, we'll think about something early that week and once I have a better idea of our timing, early next week.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Potentially. I, I don't know if this still works with everybody. We had a meeting scheduled for the 25th? Do we want to hold that? Is that still available for everyone just in case we can't figure something out?
I'd prefer to do it sooner.
I understand. I'm just saying as a...
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna do take it when we can. I mean, if we can't get a quarter, we will wait.
We should be able to get a quarter if we throw a meeting together with the five of us.
Right, that's, that's all I'm really concerned about. I think, you know, everyone's sort of aware of what, what's going on and it's really gonna come down to the numbers, about what we want to present to DEP and understanding that they can say no to a number of those things. Getting a number for the, for the chlorination control unit that wasn't part of the plan.
Right.
That's gonna be an added, added cost too and, and just to try and so we can figure out, get the input from there and then if things reprise.
I, I don't mean to bring up stuff now that Garrett's gone, but I thought that we had a biological remediation, which would be the chlorination portion in the plan.
We do.
Okay, so.
That's why you need the thing to stop it from going.
That isn't a component of injecting chlorine into the water stream?
It's apparently not. So you, you can have a system that goes and does that, but if it malfunctioned... So you know, you can have a system that goes and does that, but if it malfunctions... I know the implication.
It's malfunctioning.
So I think that that was not a required, that was not a required element of their, of the work at the time. And now it is, which is why we need to get this done as quickly as we can before the rules change. So... So, yeah. So, but Garrett's been good about moving this stuff along. So we'll, hopefully we'll have enough by, well, I'll be able to check in with him early next week to make sure we're on track and then I can reach out to everyone. And you're certainly welcome to attend, but you may have enough to do anyways or you may be conflicted depending on the time.
Yeah, that is...
But...
Put the 20th off a little bit.
Okay. So we'll just, but we'll just keep it moving. Anything else? Just one, are we still, are we still moving away from...
Actually, that was my question. I didn't, because it was sort of an odd meeting and I wasn't too sure. Do you want to try to be paperless in October? The regular schedule? Okay. I actually have that up here.
And then I think I would prefer to just use, you probably do your own machine, so if we could just have the Wi-Fi password.
Okay.
And then we have some machines available for others. Yes, exactly. And then we've been talking about it.
Yep.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to do that.
Okay, you got it.
That way it might be bumpy for a month or two, but...
We'll get there. So Pete will maybe just make sure we have the...
Absolutely.
Couple, couple problems.
No problem.
Great. Thank you.
What we probably want to do, I think it might be good though, is maybe you just come up with a...
Paperless.
At least for the first two times. Because sometimes it's easier if you're looking at stuff to just have something to scribble notes on.
I don't want you to...
That's it. So... I'll let her turn the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. A second?
Seconded.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Good night.